Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 27th work study of the Phoenix City Council. Appreciate you all joining us. We will begin with a roll call.
Councilwoman Ansari?
Here.
Councilman DeCecio?
Here.
Councilwoman Wadaro?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastore? Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here. Thank you for joining us. A work study is a good opportunity for the council to have an in-depth conversation about an important topic. No votes will be taken today. Today, we will focus on the American Rescue Plan, the federal program which includes significant aid to local governments. Although we do not have the final guidelines that we will need for this program, it's important for us to begin our planning process and this is an opportunity for council members to have that discussion in a public setting. We believe that we will receive that guidance around May 11th, 2021, and we are likely to reconvene in a policy session on May 18th to continue this important conversation. It comes at a time when we've gotten a lot of news in our community, including yesterday's major announcement from the Census about state-level data, and unfortunately, Arizona will not be receiving an additional congressional seat. We know that the Census is incredibly important for allocating resources to the city of Phoenix and to our entire state. Many of the funds we discussed today are directly impacted by, well, the city's allocation is impacted by the last census. And I am disappointed by the results we saw on the state-by-state level. We may lose hundreds of millions of dollars to the state of Arizona over the next decade due to undercount. I do want to thank my colleagues on the city council for voting to allocate resources to the city's effort to count every resident of Phoenix. The amount of time they put into this effort and our community partners put in helps our entire community. And we do have some data about the self-response rate. Ours was 66.3%, almost 4% points higher than our rate in 2010 and over 2 percentage points higher than the state of Arizona. We are well aware the Census was impacted by COVID, but I am also concerned that questions around citizenship helped us, prevented us from getting as accurate of a count as we might have hoped. So, we will have that news as we begin this conversation about these all-important federal funds, and I will turn it over to our staff to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you noted, this is a program that is impacted by Census. The funds were awarded based on population and other factors. But the item we have today for your work-study discussion is a strategy for the $416 million of American Resource, American Recovery Plan Act funds, which we'll refer to as ARPA, that have been awarded to the city of Phoenix. So, just to set the stage a little bit, it's been just over a year since we got coronavirus relief funds, which we called CRF, and we also received extra CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, and Emergency Shelter Grant funds that the council allocated to community needs last year, as well as a significant amount of emergency rental assistance funds we got late in 2020. And so, we've had experience and we have all the council and staff learned a lot in the past year about how these funds work best and how they can be allocated. So, I want to emphasize, I think the best thing the council did with this in 2020 was to set a clear strategy for the CRF funds. You had a robust discussion about them. You set a path for staff, clear path for staff to implement the funds. You checked on progress and you adjusted things as the year went on and we had information. We gained a lot of good information about what types of programming really worked quickly, such as some of our business assistance funding, what type of programs were valuable but maybe moved a little slower and therefore needed some staff, extra staff work or extra council attention. Some of our refugee funds went slower but were really valuable in helping the community. And where money really went quickly and made a big impact in a way we hadn't envisioned, such as our food relief program. So, as I said, you and we learned a lot together. One important thing to keep in mind over all this is the time constraints we had on CRF were very intense. That money had to be spent, when we got it, we were told, by December 31st, 2020. And so, that clouded or covered everything we did in how we got that money out. And here, with ARPA money, we have until December 31st, 2024. So, we actually have three and a half years so we can be deliberate and thoughtful. We want to get it out as fast as we can, but you don't have the same time pressure on you that you had with the CRF funds last year. So, we look forward to the conversation and your direction and thoughts today in your work-study, and then, as the mayor said, on May 18th. And with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Jeff Barton, who's really been spearheading the effort to put some ideas together to talk with each of you and bring information to you today that will stimulate your discussion of this item. Jeff?
Thank you, Ed. Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager mentioned, we're here today, number one, to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the president signed back in March. I do want to thank you personally for the direction that you provided to all of us over the last year and a half. We would not be sitting in the position that we find ourselves in today if it were not for your insight, your leadership, and ultimately, the adoption of last year's coronavirus relief fund strategic plan. And as the mayor mentioned in her opening remarks, we do not yet have a federal guidance, and so, the way that we are packaging today's discussion is really at a very high level, a 30,000-foot level, looking at broad categories that we can fit programs into. The intent is that on March 11th, we will have that direction from, or May 11th, we will have that direction from the federal government, and we can then have a more robust conversation with you about particular programs and allocations on individual programs. With that being said, there we go. With that being said, I want to cover a couple of things today, and some of this because we do have two additions to the council member, or to the council body, that were not here last year. So, I do want to take some time to go back and kind of paint a picture for them so that Councilwoman Ansari and Councilwoman O'Brien can be kind of brought back up to speed on what we went through, what your thought process was as we navigated COVID, as we navigated the impact that it was having on our economy. Then, we'll move into an overview of what the American Rescue Plan funds are. As Ed mentioned, we're going to be calling them ARPA. We like acronyms in city government. And then, we'll talk about priorities, programs, and allocations, again, at a very high level. The one thing I want to emphasize, as the city manager said, we do have time. I know there is an intense pressure to get these funds out to the community. I totally am not dismissing that, but like the city manager said, last year, we were flying blind all the way up until December 34th. We didn't get these funds until May. Well, we got them in February. We got the council to adopt a strategic plan in May. So, we were really on a rush. This year, we do have more time to be deliberative in our discussions, in our analysis, and how we roll out our plan. And so, what I want to start with is looking back at the last 14 months. You know, I would like to say that COVID is in our rearview, but it's more alongside of us. We're traveling alongside of it, so it's almost in our blind spot. So, hopefully, we get it in our rearview very soon. So, again, what I want to emphasize is that this council, you took very strong action last year, and as a result of your action, we were able to turn what was initially started as a surplus, it turned into a deficit very quickly. In early March, we produced the city manager's trial budget that had a $28 million surplus. Within a week, that surplus went to a projected deficit of about $26 million. And so, this council, with your strategic direction and your decision-making, you adopted a balanced budget. That balanced budget did not include any staff cuts in the current-year budget that we're working on. It did not include any service reductions, and you did adopt on May 5th the strategic plan for the coronavirus relief fund, which allocated $293 million that we received from the federal government. I want to say that we are a little bit unique. CFO Denise Olson and myself talked to countless CFOs and other financial folks from our peer cities. Not many cities find themselves in the position that we are. And what I mean by that, not having to have cut to get into this year to balance, as well as having a significant surplus for the upcoming fiscal year. The strategic plan that you adopted was recognized by a myriad of entities, including the Government Finance Officers Association, and as a result of your work, we actually got lots of accolades. So, I want to, again, thank you for your hard work and dedication. So, as we look back at what we accomplished over the last 14 months, we'll go into our CRF accomplishments. So, first and foremost, using our work of CED, we did allocate and award $12.1 million to over 23 small and micro businesses across the city of Phoenix that helped those entities deal with what they were facing throughout the duration of last calendar year. We also awarded $1 million to over, to 18 airport concessionaires. In addition to that $1 million, I believe the airport itself, through a partnership with the money that it received from the treasury directly, they allocated about $50 million to concessionaires and business partners within airport properties. The city of Phoenix also, through its Restaurant Restart Program out of CED, we awarded $1 million to over 103 Phoenix restaurants to help them reopen with strong COVID mitigation practices. And we also awarded about $2.6 million to arts organizations and about 369 individual artists to help them deal with the loss of gigs and the loss of performances. We also, through the Rent, Mortgage, and Utility Assistance Program, provided over $29.2 million to 5,000 households to provide that assistance in rent, mortgage, and utility assistance. We also allocated about $10.5 million that this council was very bold with acquisition of a hotel to relocate our homeless and at-risk veterans that were located and are still currently at a facility on Grand Avenue. We also, using partnership with the Office of Environmental Programs as well as local food banks, we awarded about $1.1 million to serve over 46,000 meals at the, I'm sorry, this was the wrong, I'm speaking out of turn. $1.1 million was our Summer Heat Respite Program at the Convention Center, where we served about 46,000 meals to a total attendance of about 27,000 individuals throughout the May to September timeframe. We also, using our local food programs through Office Environmental Programs as well as food banks, we allocated $7 million and we provided over 1.2 million meals to Phoenix residents through a variety of different partnerships. And we tested over 150,000 Phoenix residents using our COVID mobile van solution, as well as static pop-up sites throughout the city for $5 million. We also, through your partnership, as well as your direction to close the digital divide, we awarded $600,000 to purchase 800 tablets for students and kids in our public housing facilities. That enabled them to close the digital divide with them having to do online schools. We also leveraged another $2 million in coronavirus relief funds with a donation from the School Connect Program to provide over 10,000 devices to schools to assist with distance learning. And we also used about $500,000 worth of COVID relief fund dollars to buy 1.2 million masks that were distributed for community purposes. Your offices also received a portion of those masks, and you were participating in that distribution. And we also embarked on a significant investment in a digital divide project with Phoenix College that is a proof-of-concept project where we're looking to build a broadband network within the Phoenix area, and that was a $2 million investment for a project that may cost upwards of $25 million when all said and done. So, now, as we transition over to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, I want to give you an overview of what we know at this point in time. And as the mayor mentioned and as I alluded to, we don't have a lot of information, but I want you to have what we know. So, first and foremost, we know we are going to be awarded about $416 million. Those funds are to be distributed into two separate allocations of approximately $208 million each. The first allocation, based on guidance we received last week, the first allocations are due to be out May 11th, along with our first look at guidance. So, we expect to receive our allocations anywhere between May and June of this year. The second allocation, based on current guidance, and this, again, could change based on what I'm hearing, is not due to be received until the second allocation is either exhausted or one year from the first allocation. And as Ed mentioned, the funding period is going back in time to March 3rd and progressing all the way forward to December 31st, 2024. So, we've got quite a ways to go to spend these funds. Again, guidance is limited, but here are the four things that I know that are definitively listed within what guidance we do have that we can spend these funds on. They can be used, just like the coronavirus relief fund, to respond to public health emergencies, to address the negative impacts on residents and businesses. So, again, that is very similar to what we saw with the coronavirus relief fund. Second, there is a provision within the American Rescue Plan that we, as a city, can use these funds to respond to workers performing essential work by providing premium pay for those that are on the front lines facing the COVID virus. Third, we can use these funds, unlike the coronavirus relief funds, we were specifically not allowed to replace lost revenues. This fund does avail itself to replacing lost revenues. However, there are some guidelines that we'll have to follow in terms of the timing that we have to look back and to make those calculations. Again, I expect to see more clarification on that as we receive that guidance after May 11th. And finally, specifically in the world of infrastructure, it calls out, the guidance calls out three particular areas. You can use these funds to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. These are not my choices. These are not the choices of the city manager. These are the choices of what was initially laid out in the guidance. I can tell you, based on the conversations that we've had on a national level with our affinity groups, such as the GFOA, a lot of CFOs and budget folks from across the country are asking the treasury if there is any desire to broaden that spectrum of types of projects, and we all hope that there are. So, again, as we move forward, what I want, again, is start with the allocations that we've planned. These are not etched in stone. These are really based on what we've heard from you, what we've heard from the community. And again, they're at a high enough level that we think we can fit a significant number of programs under each of these umbrellas or these large-scale categories. Again, the dollars are not etched in stone. This is a very fluid process, as you saw last year. We intend for this process and this program to be just as fluid, if not more fluid, than what we went through last year. So, our first category, mitigation and care for vulnerable populations, was a category that we also used last year, addressing, you know, folks from a homeless perspective, as well as seniors, as well as any other individual that we see in a disenfranchised population group. So, what we are proposing today before you is $52.5 million out of both allocations. Next, utility rent and mortgage assistance. What we're proposing today is a extension of what we are dealing with now and what Inger and Marshall and staff at Wildfire are rolling out with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We would like to make a investment or a recommendation of $32 million per tranche, as they're calling it. I say allocation. I like that word better. Phoenix Business and Employee Assistance Program. Again, this is building off of what we saw last year with the coronavirus relief fund, so we would be leveraging Chris Mackey and her expertise, as well as other partners, and we would like to allocate $27 million per allocation in this category as well. This is a new category, youth sports, recreation, education, and after-school. After talking with you and after listening to some of the folks at our budget hearings, as well as just being a parent myself, I know one of the things that is very difficult for working parents is to get back to work because you have to have something to do with your kids. And so, youth sports have been impacted, and those are things that keep our kids out of trouble. So, we're really focusing on youth sports, recreation, as well as after-school, giving your parents an opportunity to work and so that they don't have to worry about where their children are. So, we'd like to allocate $10 million per allocation here. Phoenix Arts and Culture and Recovery Programs. We, this was a category that was also evident in our coronavirus relief fund program. We would allocate, we're proposing that we allocate $9 million per allocation to a tune of 18 million. A lot of these programs are the same programs that we operated last year, and I'll speak a little bit more in detail about each of these categories as we progress in this presentation. Next, Food Sustainability Initiative. As I mentioned, this also is another category that we thought was a very successful program last year, so we'd like to see it done again. So, that's $7 million per allocation for a total of $14 billion. Broadband and Wi-Fi access. This is really, again, building off of what we did last year with our digital divide program with Phoenix College, as well as looking to provide more and broader Wi-Fi access at city facilities, as well as possibly even our public housing facilities for those residents that have less means than others. Better health and community testing. This would be to really ramp up and transition from testing and moving into vaccines. Hopefully, the city of Phoenix can play a role in vaccines and help us get to that herd immunity number of 75% vaccinated, and this would give us resources to start building that relationship and turning our mobile vans into a, instead of testing vehicles, using those also as vaccine implementation. And then, next, city operations. Again, I think, unlike last time, we learned that we did a lot with coronavirus relief fund to bolster city resources and city response. This time, we're only allocating about $50 million, or proposing to allocate $50 million of ARPA funds per tranche, per allocation, out of these new funds. And then, our contingency, as you know, every time budget and research, where I come from, we like to ensure that we set the council up for success, and in order to do that, we always want to make sure that you have a reserve to be able to respond to anything that you didn't plan for, as well as to be able to augment and supplement any program that is exceeding its expectations. And that's what our contingency would do. So, we'd recommend about $10 million per allocation out of our contingency. So, as you can see, this total is about $200 million per allocation for a total of $416 million. Now, what I'd like to do is just walk you through some of the, again, high-level concepts of what we would recommend that we would fund out of each of these areas. So, first, mitigation and care for vulnerable populations. First, we'd look at, we've had long discussions with you and the council and the community about making sure that we have opportunities and resources to address homelessness and affordable housing. So, we would like to see programs leveraging those discussions and those decision points, and also, possibly even further the discussion that we had a few weeks ago with folks talking about a regional approach to some of these issues. And so, those are some of the things that we would do there. Also, Summer Heat Respite. Again, that was a very successful program. We'd like to duplicate that this year. There's no reason that we can't, although we will need a new location as John Chan is looking forward to having the Convention Center back in the Convention Center business this summer. So, we will definitely have to have a different location. Then, mental and behavioral health. Again, we're addressing this in the trial budget and the city manager's proposed budget with the Community Assistance Program, but we also heard at community budget hearings about the need to augment services in our community. So, there may be opportunities for us to leverage these funds to provide resources to other entities that provide behavioral or mental health services, as well as even possibly some of the rehab facility discussions that we heard at some of our budget hearings. So, again, some of these things, we have to wait until we actually have clarification on how far we can go and how much of a tight connection we have to have to COVID before we move these things forward. Veterans, public housing, and seniors, again, these were things that we did really yeoman's work, or you did yeoman's work last year with the programs that you approved, and we'd like to just continue building off of that. One thing I'll say about everything that we're addressing today is we are recommending that we learn from our prior mistakes and that we learn from the things that didn't work so well last time. And so, I know definitively a lot of the things that we struggled with last time was a resource issue. And so, in many instances, we need to make sure that we've got ample resources to make sure that these programs can run effectively and that we can respond and help our residents, businesses, and those seeking assistance can navigate the process. So, you'll hear me talk about that in a couple of different places throughout this presentation. Then, next, you'll see the allocations that we've recommended. So, this category, you'd see $105 million recommended being allocated across the two different allocations. Next up, utility rent and mortgage assistance. So, again, as we talk about what we've learned from the past, we know last year, we did take a little bit of a longer time than we would have liked to get this program up and running. We are now, we put to use, as we move forward with the $51 million that Human Services is currently administering through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, we did ramp up staffing, and so, that is one thing that we learned. We also know that it would be helpful, possibly, to have folks help navigate individuals through this process. So, if possible, and if we can get that to fit within the administrative overhead portion of this grant, we would like to do that as well. So, what we are proposing here is that we expand the existing rent, mortgage, and utility program that Human Services is currently administering. We'd also like to possibly leverage these funds to provide additional funding in case all of the ERA is exhausted. And so, again, that's just giving us additional resources. So, again, across both allocations, $64 million. Business Assistance and Employee Assistance. So, what we're proposing here is, again, building off of what was very successful last year, that Micro and Small Business Assistance Program, also looking at Restaurant Restarts. Although I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that just this week, there's an announcement that restaurants themselves will be eligible for additional federal funding. So, we may not have to go very heavy-handed here. I know, beginning May 3rd, they will have access to additional federal funding directly. So, that's something to keep in the back of your mind. Airport concessions. Again, this is something that we did offer $1 million, as I mentioned in the opening part of my program. If the council elected to do more concession assistance, we could do that. However, again, I'd be remiss to mention that those entities would also have assistance opportunities directly through the airport, through the additional funding that they're getting directly from the feds under the American Rescue Plan, as well as the coronavirus supplemental appropriations bill. Workforce training. We know, many of us know, that a lot of our workforce was put out of work, and so, they're struggling to get back into the workplace. So, what we would like to do is to leverage some of these funds to put our workforce back into the workforce by retraining them, looking for opportunities to get them back into the workforce into possibly new careers that would give them even possibly a greater future looking ahead. And so, we'd be working with Human Services, as well as Chris Mackey's group, to do this. In these categories, both tranches or both allocations, $27 million for a total of $54 million. You've got to excuse my voice. I'm in the middle of Ramadan. I can't drink water or anything, and this is a lot of talking. So, youth sports, recreation, education, and after-school programs. So, this is another category that we heard a lot about, and again, we've, over the last decade, I'd say, as a result of what the city went through back to the Great Recession, we struggled to reinstitute or reconstitute our after-school programs. So, it would be really nice if we could restore some of those programs back in our parks programs. Also, youth sports assistance. I know many families, again, if they're struggling to pay their rent, mortgage, and utilities, they also don't have extra resources to pay for youth sports, membership fees, training fees, and all of those things. So, it would be nice if we could use some of these funds to provide that assistance to our families as well. Education and library programs. Again, we can get very creative in this space. We could look at, again, enhancing our library programs, specifically College Depot, as well as tutoring programs, again, looking at our youth. We could also look at ways that we can incentivize our students in the classrooms in our schools. So, again, we will bring back additional clarification on those programs as we move forward in this process. And then, childcare assistance. Again, I know, as a person that grew up with a single-parent household, I know my mom struggled throughout her career trying to make sure that she had somewhere to send me and my siblings, and sometimes people work just to pay childcare. And so, it would be very nice if we could leverage these funds to provide an opportunity for our residents to not have to worry about having to pay for childcare and being able to actually earn a living. So, again, we're recommending $10 million per allocation for a $20 million investment in youth sports, recreation, education, and after-school. Arts and culture recovery. This, again, is building a lot of what we did last year, but knowing, again, that our arts and culture facilities, as well as our artists in the community, are still struggling. They still don't have gigs because of social distancing and reduced capacity. They are struggling to make ends meet and to meet their operating needs. So, again, we could provide nonprofit stabilization grants that would provide operating costs for up to two years, if possible. We could also provide resources to provide creative industries recovery. Again, this would be providing resources to our artists who, again, have lost gigs or don't have the capacity to book gigs and just looking at things that way. Artist-to-work programs, internships, technical assistance, and again, what we'd allocate is about $18 million or $9 million per individual allocation. Phoenix Food Sustainability Initiative, looking, again, building, again, you'll hear me say this over and over, and you're probably tired of hearing me say it, but it's building off of what we learned, what we didn't do well, what we can do better, and what other cities may have done, and what we've heard from you and the community. Local food consumption, making sure that we keep food local. Also, looking at resilient food systems. Again, as we struggle to find resilient food for certain communities that are in food deserts and other things like that, we can incentivize folks to come up with alternative means to make sure that our community has resilient food systems. food systems. Looking at economic development opportunities to incentivize people to think outside of the box, to come up with new ways to develop food, technology to produce food faster, quicker, more sustainably. Again, $7 million per allocation for a total of $14 million. Broadband and Wi-Fi access, again, looking at broader Wi-Fi access for our students and those that are in underserved communities. We would look to build further our Wi-Fi capacity at city facilities, and also looking for opportunities to possibly provide free Wi-Fi access at our public housing facilities. That would be a really unique experience. Again, $7.5 million per allocation. A lot of this funding would go towards, again, working with Phoenix College to continue to build out that broadband, that digital divide project that Councilwoman Pastore has been very passionate about. So a total of 15.
Jeff.
Yes?
Councilwoman Pastore has a question or comment.
Yes.
I have a comment on, on the broadband Wi-Fi access. What it is, is it is a intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa Community College District, along with Phoenix Union and 13 or 14 partner school districts, and GPEC, Greater Phoenix Economic Council, is also part of this collaboration. And we are expanding as we move further into this process. I do want to say to my colleagues that the 2 million that we did put towards this effort, 1 million has been spent, 600 has been spent on infrastructure, and the other 400 is also going to be spent on equipment and labor to put the micro concept up within, within Cartwright and Alhambra District to prove that this works. And once that is up at this month, then, once we prove it, get the data and everything, then we can expand across our city. The other piece is that Phoenix Union has also put 2 million into this project, and Cartwright has put in 100,000, and Alhambra has put in 50,000. So I just want to, I know we haven't updated, but I want to let you know that it's moving. There's been some glitches because of equipment and getting equipment to us and the, and the particular equipment we need. Also, in labor, you have to have a particular labor force to put this equipment up, and some people had to go back and get a certification. So it is moving. I just wanted to, to give, I know people have been asking me, so I just want to put it out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastore. So as we move back again, $15 million for the broadband Wi-Fi access portion of our program. Next, we move on to better health and community testing. Again, repeating, again, this mantra of learning from what we did last time, this would provide for ongoing testing for our residents and also possibly allow the city and provide the city with the resources necessary to participate in a more proactive way, the vaccine distribution conversation. Also looking to possibly purchase additional PPE for community distribution. Both allocations in both years, about $3 million and $6 million. And you may ask, why so low here? And, and the rationale and the reason is, unlike when we were working with vendors to try to supply testing opportunities, the va, the vendors had to buy the tests and then process tests. Vaccines are provided to us from the state via the federal government, so the cost is not nearly as much. It's, it's really just the cost to actually administer. So I don't think that the requirements would be as robust as they were on the front end when we were doing our vaccine process. Next, we move into city operations. Again, we are able to replace lost revenue. What I will tell you, as, as you are astutely aware, because of your work, your hard work and dedication, the general fund is in a very strong position, and I'm not recommending and we're not recommending any revenue replacement to the general fund. However, we do have two entities that I think do avail themselves for revenue, specifically the convention center. So over the last year and a half and projected through the end of this year, which would take us two full fiscal years almost of, of revenue lost, the convention center has lost between 40 and 50 million dollars of, of revenue. And they have an annual debt service payment that is in excess of about 48 to 50 million dollars. We pay half of that. So it would be very good from a bond rating perspective and just from an overall financial perspective if we could replace some of that lost revenue. I'm not suggesting that we take $50 million and replace everything that they've lost, but I think we really should focus on about half, and that's based on my conversations with CFO Denise Olson and some of the conversations that she has had with some of our rating agency partners. You know, the, the rental car facility is also down about 20-plus million dollars in lost revenue, and they have a debt service payment also of about $20 million, and they were recently downgraded by a bond rating agency. Again, I don't know that we necessarily have to avail ARPA funds specifically to the rental car facility because the airport is also getting direct stimulus money through the stimulus plan. But again, just two things to consider. Essential worker program, again, premium pay for our workers is specifically called out. The council has that at your latitude and your discretion. If this is something that you choose to engage, the city staff will make work on that and engage our unions on how we would roll that program out or whatever funding you'd avail to that process. Infrastructure and capital needs. Initially, as I mentioned earlier on, the guidance specifically calls out sewer, water, and broadband technology. We are hopeful that additional needs avail themselves, but we also know that there are things that we can make a, make a very strong case for. Number one, our biggest capital project would probably be along the, the 27th Avenue Recycling Facility and looking to bring that facility into the 21st century. It would help alleviate additional potential rate increases in the future. It would also allow us to leverage that technology to ensure that we are meeting our divergence goals that, that you as a council has adopted a while ago. Also, something very creative that I think we could do is what we found in our pandemic, we had to decontaminate all of our ambulances every time they went on a call that was suspected of COVID. And we know that we've got a backlog already of ambulance replacements. So we could theoretically bump up our surplus and bump up our number of ambulances that we have in service so that when we take one unit out of service to decontaminate it, we'd have another unit in place. So this would actually help the community by ensuring that response times aren't compromised when we're decontaminating units. So these are just a couple of things that we could do in the area of capital needs and, and other areas. Administrative oversight and outreach. Again, I mentioned last time when we went through Coronavirus Relief Fund, because we had staff working from home, I had a group of staff from Budget and Research and the Auditor's Office helping me do real-time compliance. That staff is not going to be available to help me administer and make sure that we stay in compliance. We need to make sure that we are in compliance, so I would recommend that we have additional staff to help administer this program from that perspective, but also to ensure that whatever this council decides to allocate funding to, if we need staff to administer direct programs, we need to make sure that funds and resources are available so that we get the funds out quickly. The other thing is outreach. We need to make sure that we have a, a, a community outreach that people know that we're here, they know that we have options to help them, and that's via web, that's via in-person, and that's via your offices as well. So we just need to make sure that we use these resources to, to administer that program and to provide the outreach. In total, on the city operations side, about $50 million per allocation for a total of $100 million. And again, I mentioned the contingency. As you know, the contingency, as it does in the general fund, it provides you, the council, with additional resources to, to deal with unexpected issues or to provide additional resources to any program that you approve that, that exceeds expectations and runs out of resources early. So about $10 million per allocation, so that's just under about 5%, so a total of 20 million. So our next steps, again, guidance is expected to come based on what we received last week from the feds. Guidance is expected May 11th or thereabout. We will return on May 18th, assuming that we get that guidance from the federal government. Based on the discussion that we have today, as well as that guidance, we'll come back to you on May 18th with more definitive information at the programmatic level, as well as individual allocations by program and program type. We could also basically start getting a head start on some of those contracts. That was one other thing that took a long time last year that we've learned our lesson from, and so if we can get a jump start on doing some of that, we'd like to do that as well. And then finally, the other thing that we would do is that we would keep our community and council updated on a regular basis. So as we wrap up this, this discussion today, the final piece of this $416 million puzzle is your communication. So first, does this framework provide or capture the feedback that we got from you in our briefings, as well as that, what you've heard from the community? What lessons have you learned from the previous stimulus and deployment? And then finally, are you interested in using these funds to leverage or explore opportunities to leverage those funds for more regional solutions? And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Stark, followed by Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, and first and foremost, thank you, Jeff, for all the hard work you have done on this. We, the recap of how we spent our money, I, I forgot of the good deeds that we did do, and I know it was because of the great efforts of staff. I have a couple of questions. First, when you talk about regional, could we leverage regional money to help with our issues of homelessness?
Councilwoman Stark, mayor, members of the council, that's an excellent question, and I would say yes. And I, I think, you know, you would play a very pivotal role, you being your collective body, in engaging your counterparts in other jurisdictions to, you know, put some of their Coronavirus Relief Funds or the American Rescue Plan Funds to that same purpose. And let's have a competition. Let's see who's willing to put their money where their mouth is and address the problem that is not just a Phoenix problem.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to pursue that. Hopefully, we can do that. I also have a question, maybe it's more for Chris Mackey, if she's there in the audience.
She is, she's coming forward now, Councilwoman.
It has to do with the Phoenix Business and Employee Assistance Programs. There she comes. Chris, I was talking to a couple small hotel owners. They're part of the great Western model where they're a franchise, and they were very, very hurt by the last year's events because we really haven't had a lot of tourism. And so I'm wondering, besides the restaurants, can we also look at the hotel industry, the hospitality industry? And have you had any conversations?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, no, we've not had any conversations with the, the smaller hotel industry as of yet, but if that is the direction of the councils, we look at restaurants, that we look at those, that, that hotel industry, we are happy to, to look at tho, that sector as well.
Well, I'd like to take a look at the greater hospitality industry, and maybe that's a conversation you can have with some of the businesses. You know, talking to one gentleman, he actually had to lay off staff, and it was, it was pretty bad, and he almost lost his business. So I, I think we need to kind of turn to that industry and see how we can help them because tourism is so important to the state of Arizona. So if you could have that conversation and maybe report back, I would appreciate it.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, I'd, I'd be my pleasure.
Okay, great. And then just one last issue, and it isn't in regards to business and employee system, but it's the food allocations. We gave quite a lot of money to the bigger food banks in the city. I hope that maybe we can allocate for smaller food banks this time around. I have a small, and, and it also serves Councilman Waring's district. It's the Paradise Valley Food Bank, very small, but it's there to help people. And, you know, they're struggling, and so sometimes we don't think about these smaller food banks. Desert Mission and Sunny Slope is another good example. They're a little bit bigger than Paradise Valley, but still, maybe we can get a list of some of these smaller food banks and set aside some money to help them as well.
Certainly. We'll do that.
Okay. Perfect, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I have a lot of comments on, on, but I'll try to stay at 30,000 feet as much as I can. I think one thing from last time, and I'm glad you highlighted the, the monies that moved forward, but I think we spent about a quarter of the money on community, and I think one big lesson learned is, is, you know, we, we figured out how to take care of some of the needs we had. I, I agree that let's try to do majority, if not all, for community benefit when it comes to this expenditure. I also have concerns with deciding on both years now or, or this year. I think, like you've been saying, Jeff, we learn a lot through these processes. We, yeah, this is the first time we're kind of debriefing how we spent last time in, in a way that's productive and thinking how we're moving forward. So I think it'd be important, or, or I'd want to know the reasoning why we're deciding to do, to decide both years now rather than deciding this year and then the second allocation. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through, through kind of the, what we, our thoughts around last year's expenditures and what we found that could hopefully be more productive moving forward. The first thing is I think we realize first-come, first-served processes don't work. It benefits a lot of the folks that already know systems, that know how to get to things, and so I think we should look for more equitable ways, whether it's lottery systems or other ways in which we could better distribute resources or, or choose who gets these things. I think we should focus more, and again, this is, as we, the process goes out, focus more on smaller, higher-impact grants. The smaller groups, the smaller nonprofits, I think like Councilwoman Stark said right now, are the ones that are more connected to community folks, so whether it's food or other areas that we'd be working on. I think definitely focusing on smaller, higher-impact grants would be better. A focus on equity, I know we have an equity office coming, but we all know the pandemic didn't impact everybody in the same way, and so as we look to alleviate the harms caused by the pandemic, we should also take that into account. Better processes and, and more community feedback. Again, we don't have all the time in the world, but we have a lot more time this time than last time. I think we should go through processes and understand how folks receive allocations or what we did last time, lessons learned from them as well, and obviously moving forward, making sure that all the money that's being moved is making sense for folks and they're able to use it. I think we should try as much as we can to remove red tape and barriers to access these funds, so whether we're doing it through partners or we're doing it directly, trying to do, you know, you used the example of the refugee money that was needed, but we couldn't support smaller groups. And so how do we figure out how to make that better? It, it's either through our partners or directly figuring out how to remove some of that red tape that, that hurt us last time. Last time we did the, the airport concessions, and, and there's a comment now about potentially doing hotels, I really think we should take, we should not do corporate support. I think in the same thought of supporting those industries, what we should do is support the workers in those industries. You know, we got an opportunity last year to do hospitality ordinance or figure out ways to support workers, and definitely would, would be opposed to giving corporations money or small, or larger companies' money rather than giving it to, directly to people. I appreciate arts and culture more than, than a lot of folks, I'm really excited about it, but I think we need to look at, at how we distribute these funds. I don't think we, I could look at community and say we're outpacing with arts and culture the funds we're allocating for food, and so kind of trying to look at that balance of, of priorities and maybe figuring out other ways to support arts and culture or combining both, or, or figuring out ways in which when we're helping one, the other can, can be supported. Having a hard time digesting the revenue replacement for convention center and, and the rental car company, I'd want us, I, I understand the, the issues that we've had. I'd want us to look at and explore other ways in, in which we might be able to get those funds, again, in the same sentiment of trying to get as much of this directly to community as possible, and so would be good to, to try to figure out how to, how to make those payments or support those two entities without necessarily taking it from here, and is there other ways that we can do that? The money for, for water and sewer investments, it's, it's a difficult one because we literally just went through two votes in the last couple of years to increase rates, and what we told community, both on, on water and also at the, in trash, that, that we had to increase those rates for those infrastructure needs, and so figuring out how to balance that, what does it mean to the folks paying these, these bills? You know, we, our office- You know, we our office supported because of the understanding the need of infrastructure. So it's hard to say now, hey, now we need more money to go here. Overall, so that was a little bit of last time, and what I'm thinking, I think overall, I would love for us to be even more creative in how we spend this money. I don't see us maybe ever getting these types of funds before or again. And so I think it's important for us to be creative. I do think direct cash or figuring out ways to get community money directly should be a priority. I think we did great with the utility assistance and mortgage assistance, but folks had, as we had conversations with folks, whether it's medicine, whether it's other expenditures, childcare, and so on, I would like to us to explore giving money directly to 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 community. We've seen cities across the country thinking through this, and I think we can find thought partners and making sure we can do it well with these funds. I love the childcare assistance. I think there's an ability to to think more about how we're going to support community members who may have lost their jobs or are shifting jobs as far as potentially maybe some community college grant support for folks to 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 go educate themselves. There was parts last year where we were able, we never gave free transit, right? We were, we weren't collecting because of the pandemic or whatever happened. I really think we should look, at least for different levels in our population, about free transit. And so those are just some of the ideas. I hope my colleagues have other ideas. I just want us to focus on long lasting efforts and and being able to really support community with with their basic needs. So those are my comments at a 30 foot, 30,000 foot level. I have a lot of comments and questions around the smaller ones, but I'll hold those for for last for next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor, followed by Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the staff putting in the these into big buckets. I do agree with Councilwoman Garcia that I feel like we should look at our first bucket and then see what our best practices are and determine then what do we need for the future and so putting it all in in the different areas. What I do have to say is the mitigation and care for vulnerable populations, that is really good, especially in the affordable housing strategy. And when when it says mental and behavioral health, what are what are what is the thought process in there? And obviously, veterans assistance, because I had been, and many of us have been hearing from the veterans and asking for assistance. But Jeff, what is the mental and behavioral health thought process?
So Councilwoman Pastor, we we've been kicking around a number of different ideas. It's ultimately going to come down to what the federal guidance allows us to do. And so I, one of the things that we've talked about is looking for those mental and behavioral health providers out there that provide long term solutions to some of the things that we're chronically addressing or dealing with that that lead to homelessness or other types of activities. If we can provide ongoing operating grants to those facilities or to those entities to help them provide more robust services, more long term services, to help people get back on their feet, to help them properly address the issues, the underlying issues that they're dealing with, those are the types of things that we're looking at. You know, we talked, we heard from our community at the budget hearings about needing a rehab facility in the on the West Side. Well, the city of Phoenix is not in the business of rehab facilities, but is there an opportunity for us to partner with an entity or an agency that is? And that maybe there's a way for us to delineate that there's a COVID connection, and we could use these funds to leverage that. So again, a lot of this is is going to come down to where, what, how much space do we have to operate based on the federal guidance and how creative can we get in that space?
And in in talking about the West Side, I agree on on that piece, but I also want other cities to put their dollars into a regional plan. I feel like even though we, and we're pushing, I like to thank Councilwoman Guardado and the mayor for pushing for a regional plan, but we're still discussing how we're going to solve the problem in Phoenix when it really needs to be a broader regional plan with our dollars. Mayor, I'm going to stop right now, and I'll come back in. I have a, I'm at home, and I have traffic moving in and out and dogs barking. So let me just stop there, and I'll pick up later.
Perfect, we will come back to you. We will go to Councilwoman Guardado, followed by Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and first off, I want to thank city staff for the work they put into bringing forward its strategic plan. Overall, I am supportive of the focus on community investment and hope that we can take a take the lessons we learned from the CARES Act to ensure that we support our working families who continue to struggle. This plan includes a lot of allocations I generally support, but I would like to comment on a few in particular, and I am happy to provide more thoughts later in the meeting. But COVID has become part of our new reality, and we need to continue to monitor it through a public health lens. However, with this next round of federal relief, we need to focus on supporting our workforce to get them back to work as safe and as response in the most responsible way. And what when and I want to strongly advocate for what our city staff has laid out in the Phoenix, in the Phoenix Business and Employee Assistance Programs section of this plan, and I am committed to be a partner for the workforce retraining facility. I know that Chris Mackey and her team, together with with the mayor and and different folks, we've been looking at the Kmart facility as as an as an option, and I know that there's a lot of, there's a whole team that has come together around making this a reality, having there be a place where we can retrain people, where we can, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of workers that need a new, that need new new skills to be able to get back to work. And I know that Chris Mackey has referred to the Kmart Center as Innovation 27. And I know there's a big plan that's going to be there behind it, and I'm hopeful that we can put money into the center so we can do what what the plan, what we said that we want the plan to be able to do. And I know that Chris Mackey and her and her team are ready to knock it out of the park. They're incredibly excited for everything that we're going to be doing, and I appreciate all the work that Chris and her team has done in the last year to support our small businesses. But I do think that we need to figure out a way, how do we define what small businesses really are and that we continue to help them. My second area of focus is childcare. I know the mayor and I and Councilwoman Ansari were at a meeting with Arizona List, and we elaborately talked about childcare and how a lot of our families are not able to go back to work be because of that, and it's a huge issue in our city. And as I have had discussions with with both city employees and people in the private sector, I have heard of the biggest roadblocks to getting back to work is the lack of affordable childcare. And it's incredibly expensive. Folks would have to put at least a fourth of their of their paycheck into childcare and then the rest into paying their rent. And then we think about how is it that people become homeless and why we have a housing crisis here in the city. And I could see this as part of a direct cash assistance program that would allow families affected by COVID to use assistance for this purpose, or we could set up a different mechanism. But either way, I think this is critical in our road to to recovery. And I know that a lot of us as moms on on the council, we know the importance of being able to have good, healthy, and affordable childcare. I don't think that we can give up the safety for affordability. I think those things need to come hand in hand, where we're able to create a safe space for the for the children, but it not something that's going to cost folks half of their paycheck. And lastly, I would love to support our youth. Again, as a mom with two young children, a 10 year old and a four year old, this has been a rough year and has not been easy on our kids who have had to adjust to distance learning. I think we need to support our school districts with after school programming and mental and physical health assistance. I know that a lot of the kids are asking about the PAC program, when are we going to restart all of these, all of these programs again? Kids are excited to be back in school. My 10 year old, I used to have to drag him out of bed before the pandemic hit, and now he's up bright and early because, you know, it was it was a rough year for all of them, and I'm excited for what we'll be able to do for our children moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, well said. Councilwoman Ansari, followed by Councilwoman O'Brien.
Perfect, thank you. Well, first, I just want to thank Jeff for the overview for us new folks on the line. It's really honestly impressive to see all of the incredible work that you all did, and I'm happy to be here in Phase Two where we have all these lessons learned. But I just have a couple, I guess, questions and comments and ideas in a couple of the specific categories that I'm very passionate about. The first one is mitigation and care for vulnerable populations. On my first day last Monday, I did, you know, I met with the providers at CAS and did a full tour, and they were talking about the Project Haven program and just raving about how successful that was and what benefits came about from having a specialized facility specifically for older folks. And then they were just saying how, you know, the program is, you know, has an expiration date, and now they're looking at how they can maybe buy the hotel to be able to continue that. So it's both a question and a comment as to whether we've considered being involved in the purchase of that to make it kind of a long term thing we're involved with. And if not, can we look at that? Because it just seems that they, you know, it seems like it was a very successful program. And when we talk about both regional solutions and specialized smaller facilities, this seems like a good one. Secondly, in utility and rent mortgage assistance, I was wondering, I mean, given, you know, the threat of the climate crisis and the fact that every summer we're breaking heat records and we have more and more heat related deaths in the city and specifically in my district and many low income communities of color in the city, I was wondering whether we could look at programs that go beyond just this temporary support with utility assistance and maybe supporting with lasting cost saving infrastructure that will help prevent heat related deaths. So air like, you know, adding air conditioners in homes, maybe proactively doing outreach at mobile parks, at mobile homes, the older adults and families, and just helping with that kind of long term assistance. I know New York has a program called the Cooling Assistant Benefit that is something like this. So again, another question, this might be something that you've already looked at or exists, but I'd be very interested in that. And then in Phoenix Business and Employee Assistance Programs, really, really want to just put out my support for any sort of free Wi Fi and infrastructure. I think the the efforts that Councilwoman Pastor has been leading in that regard is really important, and I just want to specifically highlight the need along the South Central Light Rail Extension. I think that, you know, any sort of direct aid we can provide for businesses along the South Central Light Rail Extension that is maybe beyond what another business would get given the double, you know, effect that they're having from both COVID and the construction. So I know there's been some issues with them, you know, applying for these things and maybe information around that. You had talked about community navigators. I think that's a really great idea, if that's something additional we should hire in that regard. But just want to make sure that we are supporting those folks, maybe even above and beyond others because they're facing so many different impacts. Then for Phoenix Future of Food Initiatives, another idea from another city, Atlanta has these urban edible forests. Google it, the photos look absolutely incredible, but I think that this would help in many regards. Obviously, in District Seven, we have a Food Desert Challenge, similarly with District Eight in the South, South Phoenix area. We have this Food Action Plan that you all passed last year, and I think that something like this would be really beneficial in addressing food deserts and helping us implement the Food Action Plan. We could partner with community gardens, find undeveloped lots, and basically invest in sustainable infrastructure that both builds community and protects public health. It's essentially a community garden with a lot more trees, so the Tree and Shade Master Plan is relevant there as well. But I think that's just another specific program or best practice that we could look at. Better health outcomes and community testing, I just want to, you know, I think folks already know this, but really emphasize that, you know, while one third of Arizonans have been vaccinated, there are three ZIP codes specifically in District Seven, and two of them we share with District Four that have some of the lowest percentages of folks who have actually been vaccinated. So A5009, we're only at 14%, A5035, 15%. Those are the two shared with District Four. A5043, we're only at 20%. So we could prioritize funding for vaccine education, for maybe setting up smaller pods, for door to door efforts, to actually be out and talking to these individuals. I think that that's going to be really, really critical to make sure that in South Phoenix and Maryvale and in some of these other communities, we make sure that folks get vaccinated and overcome these barriers that we know exist. And then really quickly, I just want to go, there's a couple like new ideas, just really want to put out my support for universal childcare as well, just childcare assistance. And then on the education front, you may have seen that Mesa recently passed a really cool plan, and basically what they're doing is they're supporting city residents of Mesa with free tuition for two years. It's a commitment from the city of Mesa to its residents that all eligible graduating Mesa High School students can attend Mesa Community College for two years. And yeah, that just seems, you know, going back to what Councilmember Garcia said, I think this is a once in a lifetime opportunity that we're probably never going to have again, hopefully, with no more little pandemics coming our way, where we can be really innovative and 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 build these lasting programs or and really help folks in this short term. So just some of my thoughts and maybe on the questions, if you if you have feedback or I can talk to you later about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ansari. I think you've you've hit a lot of good points, and some of the points that you've addressed and some of the programs, we've got variations of planned for in what we're going to, what we'd like to bring back with you for you. Project Haven, I know Inger and staff have had discussions ever since last year on that, so that's something that we'll we'll look at. The the heat and cooling assistance, again, those are things that we can also look into. And and we'll follow up with you offline on some of the other conversations you've had. And again, we'll try to, where we're where we can, build some of these programs in. I do, I do want to tell you, though, some of these other cities that have done some of these very, very creative things, they, in many instances, what they are using is foundation money. They're not necessarily using federal stimulus money or city general funds because there are other rules and red tape attached to those. So we have to be very careful and cognizant of the rules and the funding streams that we're talking about. But again, I'm not afraid to be creative. We're not afraid as a city to be creative, but we also want to color within inside the lines and not go too far outside of the lines.
Great, thank you.
We'll go to Councilwoman O'Brien and then Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff, for incredible presentation, and also appreciate the the background on on what the city council did with the previous funds. I just have a couple of questions, I guess, one in education. Does Phoenix's Head Start Program fall within that within that funding bucket?
So, Councilwoman O'Brien, we can look at Head Start. It's not necessarily something that we initially had on our initial radar or what we kind of threw at the wall. Our Head Start Program is largely funded through existing federal grants. But again, we can look at, if you're talking about specifically expanding that program or enhancing it in any way, we could, we could circle back on that.
Okay, that would be wonderful. I do appreciate that, and I'm excited to see that there are funds there for our students. And and I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. So what is clear is that the city of Phoenix was flush with cash prior to COVID, and we still are, but the public isn't. The public is still hurting here. I'll tell you where I think we should not put these monies, and I cannot believe that we would give out any more corporate welfare. I just can't imagine the city of Phoenix doing that when we have so many people struggling, small business owners struggling in our community, and handing millions of dollars to these multi billion dollar international companies is just horrible. The city of Phoenix last year gave out tens of millions of dollars to these corporations while people were still struggling. I still can't believe that we would even think about that or put that into our, you know, our base. But let me give you at least my three points where I think it needs to go. This is the public's money, they're the ones that are struggling. I think it needs to go directly to them. Doesn't need to be filtered through organizations, through the city of Phoenix or any other way. Doesn't need to be filtered through organizations, through the City of Phoenix or any other way. It's their money. I think that they're the ones that need to get it directly. Two, we really should be paying down our pensions. And I know there may be some arguments against that, but there are ways to structure it. When you're paying a seven-and-a-half percent interest rate on money, the, the effect of compound interest is staggering. It's staggering. This is for the future of the City of Phoenix. If we pay this down, you're going to have more money for the future for those individuals that are going to be sitting in our seats sometime in the future. We have an obligation to also look at the future to find out what we can do to help protect those future leaders, you know, with financial stability and financial responsibility. Paying down the pension debt sounds cra, it sounds like it's not very flashy, but it will provide more money in the future than you could even imagine. And then the third place I think it needs to go are roads. Any type of infrastructure we do really needs to be fixing our roads. Not just because it's in my district, but the financial district in the City of Phoenix, Calumbeck Road. If you've driven on that, it's a disaster. It needs to be fixed. But I imagine there are roads all over from the west side to the south side, to the north side, to the east side. The City of Phoenix could do a lot better job by fixing all the roads and using this money for that. Those are my areas, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. A lot of great comments from the council. I think some themes definitely emerging as well, starting with probably Councilmember Garcia, a lot of interest in our young people and our kids. I got a little bit of goosebumps when Jeff, you were talking about your mom and, and what she overcame. And, and maybe we can use that as inspiration to make it easier for the next generation of moms with great challenges. But it's sure been a tough time to be a kid and a parent. And if we can do more to make it easier for parents, if they know their kids are safe, it makes it easier to go for that, that dream job or that training program or, or so many other opportunities that are before us. Certainly agree with Councilwoman O'Brien that we ought to look at our Head Start program. In 2019, we added some full-day slots and I got such great feedback. People really appreciated that investment in our young people. And, and maybe it's on the capital side that we can create some facility investments as well. So I, I think we do need to understand what the federal guidelines are and, and what other levels of government are doing. Wanted to echo Councilwoman Pastor and Councilwoman Guardado and Councilwoman Stark's question on, on that regional collaboration around housing and homelessness. Also really appreciated Councilwoman Pastor's comments around closing the digital divide. And, and I think Councilwoman Ansari had some targeted ways we can do that. I had not thought about the South Central corridor, but that makes perfect sense for the, the vision that the community has given us of what they hope to accomplish in that area. I also think we had some themes around jobs and workforce. I agree with Councilwoman Guardado, this does seem like a great opportunity to invest in that innovation center and, and make sure that our, our residents have access to that. It was one of several, every time we talk about the Food Innovation Center, it makes me a little bit of hungry. And then when Councilwoman Ansari was talking about sort of edible agriculture, I was picturing walking on the street and grabbing an orange. And it felt like Phoenix's roots as a great citrus capital came to mind. I, I appreciate the, the dedication to still having resources for health and the, the zip code data that Councilwoman Ansari shared is, is very powerful. Those numbers are not acceptable and, and we got to keep investing, recognizing that Maricopa County is the lead in this area, but we have some trusted resources and amazing folks from our workers at the senior centers, generally to community centers, to parks and others who are trusted resources as well as our, our Phoenix firefighters who've built relationships through baby shots and other programs. So I hope we can continue to be partners. We've had some very successful partnerships with the county and, and I agree with Jeff's comment about the mobile units going out and transitioning towards more doing vaccinations. It was cool to see the Hill River Indian Community launching their mobile vaccination unit recently. And, and we, good lessons learned for us about how to do it most effectively. But in certain zip codes, we got a long, long way to go. And I think for a while still, we're going to need to be doing testing. If it turns out there is a booster required or vaccination, I hope the city can be a, a partner in that area as well and, and build on the great work that we have done in that area. Some cities have been looking at telemedicine as well, and that's something that, that comes to mind to me, particularly as we've had some conversations about needing to do better with 911 and, and just the huge number of calls that are coming in right now. Some of our neighboring cities have done small pilots. Some other cities have done larger ones where they can actually transfer calls to telemedicine providers and, and preliminary results show shorter call times, which makes it easier to respond to that huge volume that we have. In the area of workforce, I, I think we now know a little bit more about what transitions are temporary and, and what are permanent and can do some really strategic workforce programs. But we have to recognize that for some people, COVID has changed the world where their job no longer exists. And I hope that we can be partners in, in helping people to find the right job or upskilling, reskilling, whatever is the right path. I had a cool conversation with one of our labor unions about apprenticeships and whether we might be able to offer slots strategically to certain groups of folks, whether it be single parents or people who experienced homelessness and, and use that as an opportunity to think big about what are the pathways to a great middle-class life. I've definitely been thinking a lot though about that comment Jeff made on, on single parents and, and hope we can do more specifically in that area. There are a lot of research showing that when you invest in single parents, huge gains in that, in the family. The benefits are not just to the, the person getting the job, but the whole family benefits. And we have, in this country, we have 14 million single parents raising 22 million children, 80% of whom are moms. And would be good to recognize that great challenge, but also the great opportunity there. I believe in this community, arts and culture is economic development. It's part of who we are. We are a great arts and culture city. And I hope we continue to invest in those areas. We had one of the largest arts relief programs in the country. And that was very successful at helping keep that, that community active and engaged. We've gotten some, had some cool conversations about how we might do it in ways that benefit the City of Phoenix and our facilities, making sure we have great attractive arts-driven environments in which our employees can work. In my conversations on affordable housing and homelessness, I've also heard from advocates that we need to think at all different areas along the spectrum and that they feel like we've done a good job focusing on shelter and transitional housing, but would love to see us do even more in long-term housing and particularly some communities with mixed income levels, with, with some diversity. We also heard there have been some apartments for long-term housing that have begun to have caseworkers that help people access all of these great things. We are doing at the city as well as other programs and private sector partnerships already, including Urban League, CBI, Homebase and others, but that there is opportunity to invest in those areas. And then also wanted to talk about investment in technology for the City of Phoenix to be easier to access for our residents. We hear from some residents who work shifts or non-traditional schedules and they find when if they don't get into the call center, some of the issues are still difficult to deal with online. So maybe we can do more investments to make e-government available. I've heard great things about the planning department's efforts to make more services available online and that they're actually, people are getting what they need even more quickly and efficiently. So I hope we can invest in technology, including making our website a little bit easier to navigate. I'm always fascinated when I search phoenix.gov what I find, but it isn't always what I hope to find right away. So would love to invest in making the City of Phoenix easier to navigate on phoenix.gov and, and for our residents. And lots of cool, exciting ideas to brainstorm. And I know there are several council members who have additional comments. Councilwoman Pastor, shall we go back to you first?
Thank you so much. As I was stating, I want to thank everybody and all of us for being creative and innovative in the way we, we look at these dollars. I think most importantly, research has shown over time and time again is when we invest in people, that's when our economy moves and that's when people move to the next level and be, and reach the American dream of, of being sustainable and being, being able to have what, what we all want, housing, food, education and safety. And so I think that's important in looking at this, at these dollars on how we get money to the people. The, the intent of this money is really to get it to the people to drive our economy and move our economy. And so I think that that's important. In the mitigation care and vulnerability populations, as I was stating earlier about the mental and behavioral health, I also feel that we need to put some money in the mental and behavioral health for kids and families. And, and what I mean by that is maybe it's with the educational bucket, but being able to get out of COVID, understand kind of the trauma that everyone has gone through and how do we move ahead and how, how do we become resilient in that space, especially in, in, in education? So I, I would like to look at that. Utility and rental mort, we know that that has been successful and many people are in need. And so I really appreciate putting more dollars. As it comes to business and employment assistant programs, I think that is, that is good. But I also think, once again, this has, this, this piece really needs to go to small businesses, small operators that need the funding and, and really looking at that piece. The workforce retraining, I don't know if it's a facility or it's going to be workforce programming. I think that's very important. We have populations, many populations that need to be retooled. And I appreciate the apprenticeship program because I think it's in all areas. And it's important to recognize that there are, that are, there are different spectrums of area of retooling and, and really looking at that. Youth sports recreation, education and after-school programs. As you know, I am an advocate for those things. It's good for our youth. It's good for the mind, the soul and the body. And it is important and it's also healthy for parents. So as Phoenix Arts and Culture Recovery Programs, I think that's important. I do feel like we just really need to look at, at everything and everyone in our, in our whole society. And so I think that there's some benefits. Now, the food initiative, as Councilwoman Ansari has mentioned, many of us have food deserts within our districts. But I think really what's really, and we have our food plant and, and I think it's really nice to be able to possibly put it to fruition and look at, at, at areas in our, in our district to make it happen so that then there isn't a food desert and then people have the ability to, to have food, also be able to teach how to garden and, and maintain it. And I think it would be excellent for, to embed it in a school system. So I think that's great. As you know, the broadband and Wi-Fi, I feel like it's important, not on an educational purpose, but also on a workforce purpose and for families that are, that need access. And I, I think it's important all the way across the board. The other piece that I would say the mayor touched on is that we do need to invest in our city's Wi-Fi. And, and what I mean by that is we do need to invest on our infrastructure in the sense of our, some of our, we have some archaic pieces happening within our departments and are still operating on pencil and paper, which I think we need to modernize. But how we do that, I don't know because maybe that's more of a bigger conversation and this is, it's not with this. I also, the testing, 85009 and 85035 are definitely our lowest zip codes. But I also know there are a lot of efforts going in those areas and I don't know where the disconnect is happening with our community. And I don't know if it's more they're not wanting to take, take the vaccine. So I would really like to really push some groundwork effort in those areas to get solid information to people making the right choices of getting the vaccine. So I think it's needed across to get to our 70% or 75%. And then the other areas are great. I just think, at, at the end of the day, we need to get money to the people and we need to get money to make, make investments also to, with our people and be able to have our economy move. And that's what we need. We need our economy healthy and we need people at work. We need people educated or retooled. All these pieces that we have talked about, I, I want to thank all my colleagues for that. To Jeff, I think it's very important that we do stay in the guidelines and we stay within, we color inside the box. We just need to know what the box is. And I'm sure we can be very colorful and innovative on how we, how we approach these dollars. I really appreciate that com, and those comments because we just need to know what we're coloring in the box. I think we can be very innovative. We have very smart people sitting on this council to make things happen. And, and we have great staff to also help us, guide us in, into this piece. As I will leave this statement that I was taught at a very young age, never really kind of knew, why I was taught this until very late in life. You can't always get what you want, but you can get something. And so the Rolling Stones, the song that my dad always would, would say to people and even to people in Congress, we have a duty that, and a responsibility to make sure we, we stretch our dollars across our city and make sure that everybody has a piece of, of, of this opportunity. And it, to me, I look at it as an opportunity. So we can paint, we can color, and I think we will do a great job in, in, in where we need to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to first say how encouraged I am by the fact that so many of the, of my colleagues on the council have really emphasized this point that these funds should be for people. And I just want to add my voice to that. Anything that we can do to make sure that this money goes directly into the hands of everyday people and, and supporting them, I think, is priority. And I want to go back to the transit issue and just this idea that I think free public transit is so, so, so important and anything that we can do in that regard. I know it's, I don't see it here as a, as something that was directly mentioned in any of the buckets, but I know that it was part of last year's. And this morning, we did a listening session following the budget hearing feedback last week for District Seven with the CISA Puerta Neighborhood Association. Lots of moms, lots of older folks heard testimonies of residents, you know, on the west side talking about how they, you know, have to walk 23 minutes and 90 minutes to get to the bus and then they can't even afford the eight dol, you know, the, the cost of the bus. And you see cities all over the country, you know, implementing free public transit and having circulator buses or, or free, whatever it is. And I think that if that's something that we could consider, whether it's through a public-private partnership or using some of these funds to support, especially during these difficult times with economic damage still being so severe from COVID, that I think that's something that people will really, really appreciate. And we've, we've heard the calls from the community. So just want to really emphasize my deep support for free public transit, in any way that we can possibly make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Guardado, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with my, with my colleagues. I definitely think that, you know, money should be going to the people. I know that our, our office got a lot of phone calls. when we were helping with the, with the water, with the water assistance that we did, with the, with the rental assistance. I think we definitely have to continue with, with that focus on how we figure out, how do we continue to put money into, into, into our folks that are still hurting, that are still trying to figure out how they get through this pandemic? I think I've, you know, like, we need to make sure. Also, like, how do we continue to keep the money here within the state that it continues to recycle in the, in the city of Phoenix and not go to big or medium corporations? That it continues to go to working-class families? And with that, I know Jeff and I, you and I talked about this earlier and I don't think this is going to be a big surprise for anyone. But as we're looking at our Phoenix Business and Employee Assistance Programs, I definitely think that as we allocate our new federal funds, I think it's imperative to ensure we do not duplicate efforts already coming from, from Washington on, on the topic of continued assistance to the airport concessions companies. I would oppose any additional funding from the city. We have drastically reduced the rents for our airport concession companies as we all provided $1 million in targeted relief to our women and minority-owned ABCDEs. Furthermore, the American Rescue Plan, unlike the CARES Act, provides a separate fund of $8 billion for both airports and airport concessions. And I'm sure hotels are included in that as well. Having toured our airport multiple times in the past week, I would say that business is returning, thank God. I mean, it's great that we have people walking at the airport. More people are flying and it's far past time for our airport concessions to start reopening their restaurants and recalling their employees. There is a way to open safely that adheres to COVID-19 protocols that puts our airport workers back to work and improves the service for airport passengers. I would advise all our airport concessions to start rolling out their reopening plans immediately. And I, and I know our aviation department is eager to assist in helping a comprehensive plan for all of this. So again, you know, I just want to continue to echo and support for what my colleagues have said. We, we have people that are still really hurting and really need this money. And we need to figure out how do we get this money to them as soon as possible. And I think the big corporations at this point do need it. And if they need some assistance, they know how to apply for other assistances that are out there. Unlike our small, our small businesses that I know that Kris Maggie and her team felt helped fill out applications in, in the last year. I think those are the folks that we should focus on and our constituents that are still hurting from this pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that focus on small business and we'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on, on some of the things I said earlier and go more into, to the weeds a little bit. I think with, with you programming, it's something we're really excited about figuring out also how to do it or support non-traditional ways. You know, there's some boxing gyms out there. There's organizations like G-Road and other organizations that are, are working with youth and doing it in creative ways. And I also believe along with a lot of our infrastructure that could support, whether it's parks, community centers and so on, all that to be done. And again, I keep saying creative ways, but trying to think, opposed to coloring inside the lines, trying to think a little bit outside the box and figuring out how we can make those two things happen at the same time. I think mental health is, is a big deal. A lot of the folks that we talk to, we hear numbers of a 50% increase in need for mental health support. Again, there's a lot of trusted groups and organizations in the community that are already doing this work and have seen this, this growth in the need. And so again, I think just figuring out who our partners are and in both of these, and I think everything that I have an opinion on, I think process matters. And so who our partners are going to be, how this money is going to get distributed and, you know, kind of how we hold those distributions, not accountable, but making sure that, you know, they're doing what they were meant to be done. Heat relief is something that last year, you know, we were able to use the convention center. Yesterday, we had a presentation, pallet shelters at CAS. I don't know if that's the solution, but I think definitely looking for smaller dispersed facilities and ways in which we can help with, with heat relief is going to be really important, especially with us not intending to use the convention center again. Mentioned refugees a couple of times earlier. I, I do think, and it comes to mind because we were talking about LiRail earlier and how do we support the businesses? I do think there's going to need to be a, the type of folks that, that fit more of an advocate slash navigator role with certain communities in order us, for us to be able to reach better equity and better outcomes. And so I do think it would be a wise investment, especially with communities we know we've missed and not been there for in the past, to be able to find support for navigators, advocates that can make sure that those blind spots are covered that we've missed in the past. Through the budget hearings, we heard a lot. Also through the pandemic, we've seen substance abuse, alcohol abuse, domestic violence, a lot of these rise. But particularly substance abuse, we heard a lot for the need of support of services, facilities, especially since the numbers have gone on with the pandemic. Last thing I want to comment on is, is the, the regional. I, I think it's, it's fine. We should do it. I just don't want it to be an excuse or a way to evade responsibility as a city. I'm not saying that's what we're doing or done. I'm just, I just want to be clear about it. I think we have a great plan. I think we should stick to that plan and not deviate from it because we're trying to get the other cities to do things or because they have other interests. And so I think we're just being really intentional when we have those conversations. The eviction crisis is not going anywhere. It's actually growing. So I think, yes, let's work with folks. Let's figure out how to do that, but make sure we don't deviate from our plan and what's worked for us in the last year and to make sure that we're responsible for the folks that are in our city. So just some additions to my, to my previous comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any additional comments from council members or questions? Councilwoman Pastor.
The only question I have is now after having this dialogue and discussion, then will these items then come back in a different bucket list or a different category after everything we have discussed? And then I'm assuming it would come in. I know that we haven't, all of us have just said how we want it to come back, but I would prefer it to come back with the first bucket and then kind of reserve it for the second bucket of the possibility, but really talk about when we receive these monies, what the guidelines are and the first, first group or, I don't know what Jeff called it, trench, tarch? I don't know. But that's my question to staff.
Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, that's a good question, Councilwoman Pastor. I think following the conversation that we had today, which is exactly what we were looking for, trying to figure out where we wanted to go and how we wanted to allocate these dollars. You've given us a lot of food for thought. We're, I'm, I'm excited because a lot of what you're talking about were things that we were already planning to do or to address in some way, shape or form. And I do also like what Councilman Garcia mentioned about looking only at year one. That's a lot easier. It's a lot easier for all of us to wrap our heads around. And it's a lot easier to not necessarily put a box completely around us because we don't know what next year is going to look like. So I'll go back and work with staff and work with my boss over here to my left. And we'll put together a, a, a high-level presentation that focuses on those broader categories like we've done today. And hopefully on May 11th, we actually have guidance that tells us specifically, how much room do we have to wiggle? To paint inside the box or inside the lines, but also create our own box, as Council, Councilmember Garcia mentioned. So that's, that's what we'll do. I'll, I'll put together another look at this, once we get guidance, that still has those high-level projects focusing on year one allocation only. And then what types of programs could we fit in those, in those areas that specifically address the things that you brought up to us today? And maybe what I'll also recommend at that point is dollars attached to those programs to give you at least a starting place to say whether or not you're okay with the level of funding to those individual programs.
Thank you. Wonderful. Well, thank you, Jeff, and then our entire team for putting together this information. And appreciate all of the council engaging in this important conversation. I really am excited about some of the themes and values that are, that are coming out of this. We will look forward to those federal guidelines and hopefully they line up with the vision that we have at the city of Phoenix. It is a once-in-a-lifetime, we hope, opportunity to make smart strategic investments and to help our city recover from the challenges we have been facing. And looking forward to putting it to good work. With that, we are adjourned.